Good evening and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Budget Public Hearing. The purpose of tonight's public hearing on the budget is to take public comment on millage rates and the budget prior to the board approving two resolutions setting tentative millage rates and a tentative budget for the fiscal year 20. The millage rates and the budget will be adopted next Thursday, September 19th after a final public hearing. In a moment, the Budget Director will read into the record the increase in the aggregate fiscal 20 tentative millage rate on the rollback rate. We will also receive a brief discussion regarding the status of the tentative budget at which we will take public comment. At the conclusion of the public comment tonight, the board will discuss any potential changes to the budget. Mr. Bricky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kevin Bricky, Director of Management and Budget. The calculated change in the tentative aggregate millage represents a 5.75% increase from the aggregate rollback rate. State law requires that we also describe the reason for the increase over the rollback rate. The budget under consideration tonight reflects, in part, normal inflationary increases in the cost of doing business. It also reflects the need to provide local government services to a growing population, which includes ongoing funding for transportation and increased funding for affordable housing, statutory and contractual commitments, performance pay in union contracts, technology upgrades, the sheriff's office, and certain other county needs. And with that, I'll now provide a brief overview on the budget. Commissioners, the tentative budget the board will vote on tonight reflects the county administrator's recommended budget for FY '20 as amended by updates and corrections that have been made since the recommended budget was delivered on July 17th. The FY '20 tentative budget is balanced. Additionally, the county continues to maintain its general obligation AAA bond rating, and the tentative budget you will vote on tonight reflects investments that are consistent with your strategic focus. Some of the highlights, as I said, we do, we are maintaining our AAA bond ratings. They have been reaffirmed over the summer by Moody's, Fitch, and S&amp;P. We are one of 39 counties that's called a triple AAA, where we have a AAA rating from all three rating agencies. We're one of three in Florida, and there's 3,142 county equivalents in the nation. The budget tonight represents no millage increase. Millages currently are flat. Our general fund reserves in our FY '20 tentative budget that you'll be voting on tonight, our reserves are at 22.5%. In our FY '20 recommended budget, they were 22.6%. One change that's happened because we changed the funding for affordable housing from the unincorporated area to the countywide area is that our reserves between the two general funds are more balanced, 24.3%. The unincorporated area is nearly 20%. Just a reminder that nearly 60 cents of every dollar of property tax revenue goes to law enforcement, fire services, and other public safety. Here is our total, the total tentative budget is $6.62 billion. And this funnel we've seen before, where it shows at top some of our largest funding areas, reserves 24% of the total, noncash transfers are 20%, restricted sources are 24%. That's things like gas taxes and the indigent care surtax and other restricted sources. Our constitutional officers, including the sheriff, is 9%. Transportation improvements is 8%. Other capital improvement program is 7%. And then, when it comes to the county administrative departments, the county administrative departments account for 7%. That's where you have the most flexibility. It's about $440 million of the $6.62 billion budget. Taking a look at the two general funds alone, the countywide general fund is about $885 million. Constitutionalists represent 47% of that on that purple, large purple pie slice. The sheriff is about 35.4%. Public safety, once again. And the unincorporated area general fund, public safety is, again, a very large portion, an even larger proportion. It's about 58% of the total. Fire rescue represents about 32% of the total. The sheriff represents about 26% of the total. Now, over the last 10 years or so, we've had good experience and good results in cost control and reduction. Here, we're looking at the per capita cost for county administrative departments over the last 10 years. We've had an average cost reduction since FY '10 of 10.9%. So we're quite pleased with that. Our employees per thousand citizens has come down from 10 years ago. We were at 4.65 per thousand. We are now at 3.92. We've gone up a little bit as we've been trying to address certain sustainability issues and resiliency issues and address those. And we've been able to do that in a climate where certainly we have good economic results, but our personal income is lower than some of our comparable communities. $45,000 for the metropolitan area compared to $51,000. Our taxable value, while it's high at $86 billion, it is lower compared to many of our other comparable large counties in Florida. Palm Beach, for instance, is $177 billion, as is Broward. Miami-Dade is $272 billion. When we look at total taxes, fees, and service charges, not only from the county but also from any other local government or independent agency, we compare quite well with our other counties. In 2018, we were at 5.5% of personal income. If we were to add in the transportation sales surtax and the school sales surtax, that would put us at about 6.1%. But even with that 6.1%, we're below our other comparable counties who are in the neighborhood of 7% to 10%. And 10 years ago, we were at about 7.6%. So we've been able to see good results there and bring that with cost control. In the last 27 years, we have had 24 millage reductions. Some of them have been larger in those early years. In the, on the right side of the graph, it's actually hard to see those millage reductions because they were quite small. But we have had 24 millage reductions in the last 27 years. This is looking at the current flag list that's had been included in your packet, and we're not asking for action on this tonight. This is a flag list that can be voted on at the next public hearing, next Thursday, due to the way state law dictates that we conduct our hearings. There is a late addition on this from the public defender of $150,000. But with that introduction and brief overview, I recommend that you accept public comment at this time.
Thank you. Now moving to public comment, we had eight speakers that signed up. First speaker is Joanne O'Brien, followed by Gerald White. Each person has three minutes. Please just state your name when you come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. Joanne O'Brien, Thrasher Drive, Tampa, 33610. To me, the budget looks pretty good. We should focus on police, fire, and affordable housing in this county because our county is growing by leaps and bounds. And especially with the fire department, I think we should have some more ALS units. That's just my opinion because we do have an aging, you know, population here. I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but that's how I see it. And maybe focusing on more money, maybe next year toward affordable housing. Because I know as a senior, losing $3,000 in income, I'm hurting. So, and I'm just struggling to keep my house right now. I thank you very much for listening to me, and you all have a great night and stay safe out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Gerald White, followed by Mario Nunez.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Gerald White, Hillsborough County Community Activist. It's been a while since I've been before the board. First, I want to thank the new Commissioners for doing an outstanding job, for getting in here and finding your way and acclimating and putting together with your other colleagues a great budget. You know, it's a huge $6 billion budget, and I guess a lot of citizens have been watching to see how you guys get into the groove, and you have. Mike Merrill, outstanding job. It's a beautiful book, beautiful budget, county administrator, budget director, county attorney. I love the pictures in the budget. I was missing my little green book. I want my little green book. Outstanding job. The homeless, that flagged item for the 2 million for the homeless, we may receive some of the citizens from the Bahamas. I support that. I support the Park Miller's flagged item that he's looking for in the budget that's flagged. Just continue the work that you're doing. You all are doing a great job. I like this commission, whether you're Democrat or Republican, you're working together, you're solving problems. My only disappointment as a citizen and as a supporter of the transportation tax that it's not here yet, it's, what I understand, going before the Florida Supreme Court. I'm highly, highly disappointed as a citizen that that issue's not resolved yet because I voted for it and I want it. You know, my family wants it, and all my neighbors want it. We want that transportation tax to be executed and implemented as soon as possible. So I'm asking the county attorney to, to all you can, to continue to defend the position of the citizens of Hillsborough County that put that issue in place. We didn't get baseball. Commissioner Hagan, I'm hoping we can still have baseball, and so keep working on that. It's a beautiful county. Everything is in order. I was out to your emergency center today to pick up some hurricane guides, dynamic facility out there, the beautiful park out there. Hillsborough County and the state of Florida seems to do things right as a government, and it's just so professional when you look through the documents, no matter how long you've been away from government. As a citizen, you come back in and you look at the documents, you pull up the YouTube, you pull up HTV, and you can really catch up and see what's going on in your community. And so I just wanted to commend the staff, commend this elected body here, the Commissioner of Hillsborough County for the work that you're doing, and the seasoned Commissioners that have really have shown the way to the new Commissioners. Just continue to work together. And my Commissioner, Les Miller, you're the man. You're the man. You have delivered for our community. The Seaplane Andrews Public Library is just beautiful, beautiful. And of course, I do continue to support the museum. I hope we can get the African American Museum. And so to me, everything is in order, and God bless, and just keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you, sir. Mario Nunez, followed by Jessica Sturris.
Sturgis.
Sturris, okay.
I knew that was going to happen. You know, it's just as luck would have it. One small correction to the flag. We're listed there as Tampa Bay Arts and Entertainment, and whilst the network is very entertaining, the E actually stands for education. So if that matters, it should be Tampa Bay Arts and Education. Mario Nunez, 15022 Rocky Ledge Drive, Tampa, 33625, in the heart of Commissioner Hagan's district. We are here today to convey an important information about the worthy benefits of TBAE's Communication Internship Program. TBAE, the hardest-working nonprofit, why do I have this frog in my throat? Excuse me. TBAE, the hardest-working nonprofit in the Bay Area, recruits highly motivated and talented multimedia students from USF, HCC, the University of Tampa, and SDHC High Schools. These students help increase the quality of TBAE's programming, which has been nationally recognized, winning numerous Telly Awards for excellence in broadcast production. With the help of these wonderful interns, two of whom are seated here behind us, we are producing more than 100 shows a year. Not only are the students receiving state-of-the-art, hands-on technical training, but they're also getting to work with many high-profile guests. They learn to interact and conduct themselves in real time with professional decorum, things that you just can't learn from a textbook. As host of the Tampa Native Show, I've been duly impressed with our interns' dedication to commitment and to helping make the Tampa Native Show all it can be. For this, I'm grateful. You know, many hands not only make light work, it makes great work. My purpose here is to share with you what a positive, successful program this has been thus far. Don't just take my word for it. You'll hear in just a moment from some very talented students in our program in their own words what this experience has meant to them. Before we roll the video, just let me say on behalf of the Tampa Bay Arts and Education Familia, thank you very much for your time this evening, and thank you for all the hard work that you do. We know that what you do is not easy, and we know that you guys put in long days, and we are grateful for your help and including us in the original budget as well. So without further ado, if they can roll that video.
Everyone is so cool, so helpful. The environment is really fun. You get to meet a lot of people in Network. It's a really cool place to work and intern.
This is honestly the best internship I've had. I feel like I've learned so much when it comes to marketing and promos, community content for social media, all that good stuff.
Thank you very much. Jessica?
Good evening. So my name is Jessica Sturgis. I am the Director of Business and Development for TBAE Network, and that video is actually created by a high school intern with us. And there actually is a longer format of that. If you'd like to watch it, it's on tbae.net. So, I'm a little nervous. This is my first time here. So what we're asking, what we're asking for is for an expansion plan, and what that actually includes is an increase in TBAE's production capabilities by adding another green screen studio, which will be utilized by the interns to create impact videos to help other nonprofits to get their message out. It also provides a better teaching environment by creating a dedicated edit suites and a new control room allowing for more classroom-like settings for teaching advanced editing and live production techniques. And finally, we also hope to develop some custom software to allow us to more accurately track the student's involvement in everything that they do. So finally, thank you, Commissioners, for putting us back in your budget, and thank you, Commissioner Overman, for championing our small calls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barb Topke, and I'm here to talk about ferries, finances, and fun. First of all, I've never ridden the Tampa Bay Ferry. I've just read about it in the newspapers, but it sounded like fun. Then I heard about it last night at the Sierra Club. Finances. I heard that a company up north can lease us the ferries for half the year when their summer season ends. The county won't have to buy them, and I think they said the lease price was a good deal. For docking spots, I read that Mosaic, I think, had some land the county could use around Apollo Beach, and then Mayor Castor said they might be using the convention center. More finances. I learned that MacDill gives travel vouchers to their employees, many of whom live in the southeast county Apollo Beach area. They can use their voucher for a van or a bus, and I don't remember if they can use it like for gas mileage for their car. Or they could use their voucher for a ferry. I think that it would be a lot more fun to ride a ferry across the bay than to ride in a bus or a van and still be stuck in traffic. The ferry schedule. If we get four ferries, they could move more people back and forth, and that's during the workday. Then nights or weekends, the ferries can leave the convention center for St. Pete for a night of fun. They could fill up both ways. And again, fun. I once got to sail from Davis Island to Apollo Beach with friends. It was gorgeous until the wind died, but it was so much fun to be out on the water, looking back at downtown and forward to Apollo Beach. Then after dinner, riding back, the stars were out and the city lights were shining. It was just beautiful and fun. So please bring back the ferry. It's good, clean, financial fun. Thank you.
Lois Price, followed by Chris Vella.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Lois Price. I'm from First United Church of Tampa, and I'm a board member of HOPE. On behalf of the 23-member congregations of HOPE, we thank you for your decision last Thursday to pass Ordinance 1919 to establish the Hillsborough County Affordable Housing Trust Fund and provide for the allocation of at least $10 million annually to create and sustain affordable housing. Your historic decision will positively impact the quality of life of tens of thousands of families over time. Although we have faced a number of challenges over the years, you know, I'm grateful to live in a community where open discussion like this is possible and where the government officials are able to overcome differences in a way that makes this community a better place to live and work. So thank you for that. We at HOPE have begun our annual listening process. In small group conversations across the county, we continue to hear stories of residents in urgent need of affordable housing. Some members with full-time jobs live in fear of becoming homeless. Seniors on fixed incomes can't afford medications because their rent is so high. Now, as you deliberate and ultimately vote on your 2020-2021 budgets, we ask you to approve the proposed $10 million of new monies each year, as well as the carryover to the 2020 budget of $5 million in unused funds allocated in this year's budget for affordable housing. Also, as the first biennial affordable housing plan is developed, we urge you to spend at least half of the funds over the next two years to create and rehab decent housing affordable for working families and seniors with very low incomes at 50% and below the AMI as the ordinance allows. Data shows that this is where the current need is greatest. Families are suffering, and their needs are urgent. We will all benefit when all county residents are able to secure safe, affordable housing. So thank you.
Thank you. Chris Vella, followed by Matt Dolan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Chris Vella, 33605 Ybor City. So I'm here to talk about the Cross Bay Ferry. I've been struggling with this quite a bit internally for transit mode. I do love ferries, and we really need to make use of our waterways. I think it having more frequency, so I do support having more frequency for year-round is a good solution. And while I do say this, there is a couple of issues that I am quite concerned about. And for my community, that's the streetcar. As you all know, FDOT right now subsidizes the streetcar system. We are going to be extending that streetcar system very soon, hopefully, to deeper in Tampa Heights. My concern is we got to look ahead and see what happens when the money dries up for, from FDOT, or if they decide to not fund it any further. So as leaders, I ask you to think really forward and ahead. After the ferry service does expire, what are we going to do to carry on that line? Because it's extremely vital to keep tax revenue going for Ybor City as well as downtown. Now, a couple more quick points on the business side. We'd like to see an RFP. I think that's a very fair process whenever we're getting a transit service. So this is after the annual run. We also need to know what's going to happen if the service defaults. Who's going to have responsibility on the ferries in terms of sale? The other thing is I don't want this to go to HART. HART is a federally recognized organization. They are built on, they're predicated on equity. They have to follow Title VI. Right now, I can tell you that this ferry does not serve a broad brand of diverse population. So it should stay within the county for the moment. If there is a way to broaden that, which is possible with CSX and other circulators, let's do that. The other thing that I'm concerned about is this parking. So while we have parking rights and are really helpful, we need to know how to price those out. We need, we should price parking at those facilities and then have that revenue go back to the facilities to sustain them. If, again, which is unlikely, but if transit service fails on this, that's going to put an accountability on our heads. So I support it, but again, I just want it to stay in the county, and I just want everybody to look forward with this decision well ahead, so that way we can still have good service and priorities in Tampa, including in other cities throughout the county. Thank you.
Matt Dolan. Matt Dolan. Is there anyone else wishing to address the body today? Anyone else? Okay. Close of public comment. We're now going to board discussion. Commissioner White, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bricky mentioned that we can't take action on the flag list. I understand that we can't take final action tonight because we're holding one more public hearing, but I think it is important to give all of the stakeholders that are here this evening some idea of where they stand with respect to these items that they care so much about. So I move that every item on the flag list come to the next meeting as part of the recommended budget and no longer as flagged items.
That was a motion by Commissioner White. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murman. Commissioner Kip, you recognize.
Yes, I have a little confusion here because I know it's gone back and forth about the BP. And the flag list I see here, which you're saying, doesn't have my flag today about the ferry on it.
What flag today?
That was submitted as requested.
It's in the presentation.
I have a copy here that was...
Right, what was submitted to the board beforehand, but what would be on the board's agenda for the regular board meeting is information for the BP list that you all asked us to bring back.
Okay, there's two items here, though, that say it's BP on the list I have.
Right. Subsequently, there are various items that will be showing as the BP because you asked us to bring that back to a regular board meeting.
Okay, so that's coming back to a regular board meeting. So what is being asked for is to pass what's on this list, including money for the BP or not?
I think what's being asked for us to bring back to the next public hearing, Commissioner, and you can correct me if I'm wrong...
I'm sorry.
...is that we bring back at the next public hearing all of these items. We don't necessarily have to speak about the funding source, but that these items come back for consideration at the next public hearing. Is that what you meant?
Well, if we can, if we can do it legally, just that they be embedded in what's recommended next week, and it's no longer a flag list, can we do that? We have to carry it over as a flag list?
You can ask us to bring it back for consideration at the next hearing.
Let me ask Sam just to clarify that, to make sure.
That was going to happen anyway. It was going to bring it back. Am I right? Am I right? That was, it was going to be brought back anyway for consideration?
For consideration. So you're not really approving anything this evening, but you're asking us to bring the whole list back at the next meeting.
That works.
Sam Hamilton County Attorney's Office. As Mr. Bricky mentioned earlier, it's really a function of the advertisement, the timing under the statute for the ad. They've already submitted it to the paper. That's the reason why they're requesting it be brought back to the next meeting.
Okay.
So is the motion necessary?
I'll just withdraw my motion in that case.
Motion withdrawn. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize.
Yeah, I was going to say that I supported the motion as on the floor. I mean, it used to be... I mean, it used to be, again, dating myself, but when we would go through the reconciliation workshop and process, we would vote on the flagged items, so they were considered to be in the budget. So I'm totally comfortable on voting on it. It's going to come back anyway, but at least we're showing a level of, providing a level of comfort, if you will, to those that, hey, it's going to be in the budget. The only question that I had was if we leave the funding source open-ended to be determined next week, but I'm completely supportive of voting on it because we've done that historically. But it's not really necessary, but I think it just shows, again, gives them a level of comfort and provides assurance that, hey, we're going to support the item. And likewise, if Commissioner's not going to support the item, then we vote, we vote against it as well. But, so if you want to bring it back, I'm supportive of it, but I understand that it's not necessary at the same time.
Mr. Merrill?
I mean, I think the difference is, you could vote to support the list tonight. It's just you can't vote to put it in the budget because of the advertisement. So I think, just voting as you, as you just, as you just described, if you want to vote to support the flag list tonight, that's no problem. You can do that.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Okay. And it relates to that particular issue. If we're going to be asked to approve the flag, the vote for approval for the flag list, I think it's critically important that we understand that, one, it is or is not going to be funded by dollars in the BP, or we can find other sources. For example, last week when we had the budget workshop, and we were presented with the 560-560 plan, which I, you know, really liked that idea, but I was told that it wasn't going to be funded in the budget, but there is, is on the flag list now, or at least a piece of it is in the flag list, and the BP dollars are identified. I'm not sure what the $2 million is for, and that's why if we're going to approve the list, I think it's important for us to understand what's on it. That's all.
You talk about the $2 million for homelessness? You want to talk about that, Commissioner Merman?
Well, the motion I made last week was very specific. It was, number one, to accept the report as presented to us, which was the 560 plan, and to allocate $2 million to the plan, and matching dollars. And they were matching dollars to the plan. So that is, was exactly my motion. And, you know, she will come back to us, I know, because we had a meeting tonight, the Homeless Initiative Board, and she's going to come back to us and tell us how she's going to use it, because there are many components in that 560 plan. And she is seeing us matching. She wants to be sure that she's getting the most leverage and most impact for the dollars.
Okay, I like the program. I like the plan. My surprise was that it was being, coming out as a matching dollar out of a source that is the BP dollars. So, you know, if there's no other source anywhere in the county in county-wide funds for a wonderful program, that needs to be clarified and stated, because right now, we're just looking at, according to what this is, what we're looking at now, that that is where the monies would, the source of use would come from.
Okay.
The recommendation for the BP money was because the other source would be reserves, and so kind of in the hierarchy of choice, if, as you deliberate next week on the BP list, you can agree that the homeless program should come out of BP money, that would be better than going to reserves. And so that's why we showed it, but it's just a recommendation, so.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. And I thought in the past that we had taken some kind of a vote on the flag list at this meeting, so Commissioner Hagan, I'm glad that you validated that. So, you know, I'm not sure of the best way to word it at this point, but I'll take a crack at it.
Tonight to do a couple of bites out of the BP apple, but not the rest of the bites, I'd want to do that all together.
The action would be exclusive of the funding source, because otherwise it would put us back into the problem of...
Yep.
Yeah, so it would be...
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Sorry. I'll just say, that's exactly the point I was going to make, and I feel comfortable with what it was. But as to reconciliation, too, I thought we used to have just a workshop, I remember it twice in the mornings, that was just about reconciliation. But that somehow didn't seem to, I was confused about the process this year because it seems like it was scheduled differently.
Commissioner White, would you restate your motion, please?
My motion was to support every item on the flag list, and Mr. Merrill has stated for the record that that would be exclusive of any funding sources at this point. We'll deal with that, I assume, next week at the next public hearing.
Is there any further discussion on motion? I have motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. See no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Is there any other discussion by board members? Any other discussion by board members? Before adopting the Miller's budget resolution, we must publicly announce the following. The name of the taxing authority is the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. The aggregate rollback rate is 8.4240 mils. The proposed aggregate tentative Miller's rate of 8.9088 mils represents a 5.75% increase on the aggregate rollback rate. The tentative Miller's rates to be levied are county general, countywide general revenue 5.7309 mils, unincorporated area municipal service taxing unit 4.3745 mils, library services 0.5583 mils, voted general obligation debt for environmentally sensitive lands 0.0604 mils, voted general obligation debt for unincorporated area parks and recreation 0.0259 mils. At this point, it is appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the Miller's resolution as presented by the staff.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Overman. See no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Now that the tentative Miller's resolution has been adopted, it is appropriate to entertain a motion to adopt the budget resolution as presented by staff.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. See no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
That concludes our budget public hearing tonight. The date, time, and place of the final public hearing will be 6:00 PM on Thursday, September 19, 2019, in the County Commission Boardroom on the second floor of this county center, 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33602. We'll adjourn.